Myself to be with you all in Bethel, house of worship Dallas. I bring very warm and loving greetings from the few assemblies throughout Australia. And also from the local assembly where we worship together every Sunday. And I bring warm greetings from the local assembly as well. So the few days that I'm going to be with you all in Bethel House of Worship. The Lord has burdened my heart to share with you all in this week about the wilderness experience of the people of Israel. That is what I'm going to share with you all. And we are all in a wilderness journey in this world. And we can, you know, these are examples that we are going to see that we can follow in our life in this wilderness journey. So the theme verse that we are going to concentrate in this week for the special meetings. We have taken from the book of Deuteronomy. Now, before I start the word of God, this is my humble request. You are, those of you who are listening online, please have a full Bible in your hand. You know, usually the, the, you know, our tendency is we take it very casual because we are at home. That's fine, but I would humbly request you that every verse that we call from here, I really request you humbly, open your Bible and we must read together. You know why? What I cannot explain, the word of God will explain to us. So that is a criteria for this evening. So if you could turn your Bibles, please, those who want to take notes, please take notes so that you can share it with others as well. The book of Deuteronomy, chapter eight and verse two. I will read this verse, you please follow your Bibles in your own language. The book of Deuteronomy, chapter eight and verse two. And thou shall remember all the way which the Lord thy God led thee, these forty years in the wilderness, to humble thee and to prove thee, to know what was in thine heart, whether thou would keep his commandments or no. Now, the, another cross reference from the book of Psalms, chapter ninety-five. And we are going to read verse ten. Psalms ninety-five and verse ten. Forty years long was I grieved with this generation and said, it is a people that do err in their heart and they have not known my ways. I'm going to repeat it. Forty years long, I was grieved with this generation and said, it is a people that do err in their heart and they have not known my ways. Shall we pray and ask the Lord to prepare our hearts to receive his word? We see in the book of Acts that the pe- people of the early church, they received the word joyfully and readily. So God desires to speak to us tonight, so we must be prepared to receive his word. So please join with me as we pray together. Loving and gracious Father, great and mighty God, with hearts full of worship, gratitude and adoration, we have come into your loving and holy presence. We want to thank you and praise you, Lord, that you have delivered us from the bondage of sin, brought us into life and liberty in Christ Jesus. You have given us eternal life, joy unspeakable and full of glory. According to Ephesians, chapter one, verse seven, you have given us redemption and forgiveness. And thank you for our living relationship with the living Savior. Thank you for every opportunity you bring us together to learn more of Christ. This evening, we thank you that you have gathered your people together, Lord, in their homes to listen to your word. So Lord, we humbly pray that your loving and sweet presence we may enjoy. We thank you for the living word of God you have given to us in our own language so that we are able to read, understand and apply it in our own life. So tonight, we thank you that you are the living bread which came down from heaven. And only that living bread can satisfy our hungry soul. Tonight, we want to hear thy loving voice from thy loving heart. So Lord, open thy word. As we look into your word for a little while, we claim thy fresh anointing and the power of the Holy Spirit to rest upon us. And pray, Lord, that you will anoint us. And Lord, may we be able to study thy word tonight. We pray that thy son may be exalted, enemy may be put to shame. And do pray that thou will bless our time together. We pray for the internet and everything, Lord, our computers you will touch. And pray, Lord, that there'll be no hindrance to receive thy word. So bless our time together. In my inadequacy, I claim thy sufficiency. Lord, have mercy, we are handling spiritual things and without you, we can't do anything. So have mercy upon us. Here an answer of a prayer. As we pray this, in the blessed name of our loving Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, amen. So don't forget, we are going to concentrate this week on the wilderness journey of the people of Israel. So tonight, if you can turn with me to Second Kings and chapter two. We are going to have a small Bible reading. Second Kings, chapter two, reading from verses one to six. So I will read the first verse and you read the second verse, please. And read your portion loudly and joyfully, even if you are in your homes. And it came to pass when the Lord would take up Elijah into heaven by a whirlwind, that Elijah went with Elisha from Gilgal, verse two.
I will not leave thee, then down to Bethel.
And the sons of the prophets that were at El- Beth- at Bethel came forth to Elisha and said unto him, knowest thou that the Lord will take away thy master from thy head today? And he said, yes, I know it, hold ye your peace.
And El- and Elijah said unto him, Elisha, Terry here, I pray thee, for the Lord has sent me to Jericho. And he said, as the Lord liveth, as thy soul liveth, I will not leave thee. So they came to Jericho.
Verse five, I'm reading. And the sons of the prophets that were at Jericho came to Elisha and said unto him, knowest thou that the Lord will take away thy master from thy head today? And he answered, eh, I know it, hold ye your peace, verse six, please.
And El- Elijah said unto him, Terry, I pray thee here, for the Lord has sent me to Jordan. And he said, as the Lord liveth, and as thy soul liveth, I will not leave thee. Then they went on.
Thank you, the Lord, may bless the reading of his precious word. Now, I would like to share with you about the journey that Elijah and Elisha took together before Elijah was taken up to heaven in a whirlwind. We all know the story very well during the Sunday school days. Now, just a background of introduction. Elisha was a ploughman. Ploughman means, in today's modern language, a farm worker. And being a farm worker, he was plowing the field with twelve pair of oxen. Oxen means bullocks. And when Elijah passed his mantle on him to be his successor, without hesitation, you know what the history says? That he left twelve pairs of oxen, he gave up his job. And we see that he followed Elijah and eventually becoming his servant and prophet. Now, from the scripture portion, we read, we see how Elijah, you'd, you would have definitely noticed one thing. That how Elijah, at each step of the journey, he was testing Elisha by saying, you will notice this repeated in six verses. And what is it? What does Elijah tell Elisha every time? Stay here, don't go any further. And Elisha, you know, actually Elijah was testing Elisha by these words. And Elisha passed the test by saying in few words. And this is also repeated in six verses. And what does he repeat? As the Lord liveth and as thy soul liveth, I will not leave thee. He wanted this assurance from Elisha. Elijah wanted this assurance. And in their journey together, they both visited four places mentioned in the Bible reading. Now, please let's follow carefully. Each of the four places mentioned are highly significant in Israel's history. And I believe they are highly symbolic of four stages in our Christian life. So let us look into the scriptural meaning of these four locations. Every believer must go through these four stages in their life. Did you get me? Four places they visited. And where did they start their journey? They started from Gilgal. So we are going to look, I'm hundred percent sure, I cannot finish this message tonight. But God willing, we will continue tomorrow. Now, first starting point is Gilgal. So the first stop on the journey was Gilgal, meaning please note the meaning of Gilgal. The meaning is circle of stones or rolling away. That is the meaning of Gilgal. The people of Israel, after leaving Egypt and the wilderness, the first encampment after crossing the river Jordan was Gilgal. According to Joshua, chapter five suggests a symbolic rolling away. Now, please turn with me to Joshua. Everybody, those who have your Bibles, turn with me, please, to Joshua, chapter five, verse nine. And the Lord said unto Joshua, this day have I rolled away the reproach of Egypt from of you. Wherefore the name of the place is called Gilgal unto this day. So the meaning of Gilgal is rolling away of past burdens and a new beginning. Don't forget. Rolling away of past burdens and a new beginning. You know, I want to remind you about this rolling away. You know, all our burdens of sin rolled away on the cross when the Lord Jesus Christ died on the cross of Calvary. Can I tell you something tonight? According to Hebrews, chapter two, verse nine. You know what we read there? The Lord Jesus Christ tasted death for every one of us. That is Hebrews two, nine. Then Hebrews thirteen, thirteen. The Lord Jesus Christ went outside the camp. And outside the camp where the animals are slaughtered, dirty, filthy place. And in that place, the Lord Jesus Christ, you know what happened to him? He endured the cross. He bore our reproach. And I want to tell you that he became the burden bearer of sin. And on the cross, he bore all our sin. And he has endured the cross. The Bible says in the book of Philippians, chapter two, verse nine. He endured the cross. He endured the suffering for your sake and my sake. All our burdens were upon him. And tonight, we can say, hallelujah, what a beautiful Savior. He has done something beautiful out of your life and my life. Tonight, if there is anyone who's listening to this message, if you have not received Jesus into your life, I encourage you that tonight, if you believe on the Lord Jesus Christ and if you acknowledge that you are a sinner and if you confess your sin, God is willing to gi- to give you forgiveness and redemption through the blood of Jesus. And all your sins will be rolled away. And tonight, you will be set free. Now, my dear friend, there are two important things in Gilgal or two important meanings of Gilgal. And the first one, we are going to have a small Bible reading. I told you, there are two meanings or thi- things about Gilgal. Now turn your Bibles to Joshua, chapter four. You must follow this very carefully, then only we'll understand the message. Joshua, chapter four. We are going to read from nineteenth verse to twenty-four. So again, we are going to read alternatively. Joshua, chapter four, I will read verse nineteen and till verse twenty-four. And the people came out of Jordan on the tenth day of the first month and encamped in Gilgal in the east border of Jericho, verse twenty, please. And he spake unto the children of Israel, say, when your children shall ask their fathers in time to come, say, what mean these stones? I'm reading verse twenty-three. For the Lord your God dried up the waters of Jordan from before you until you were passed over. And the Lord your God dipped to the Red Sea, which he dried up from before us until we were gone over, verse twenty-four. So God told Joshua, take twelve stones. And he ordered him, take up twelve stones, set up as a monument. And re- it's a reminder that anyone that looked at the stones would remember that God is alive. He is a living and an awesome God who did a miracle to dry up the waters of River Jordan and Red Sea for the people of Israel to cross over and that he acts on behalf of his people. Now, this is a small diversion. Can you imagine three million people? Now, somebody calculated this and gives us a statistics. Three million people, if they went on a narrow path, the line would be, you know, eight hundred miles. Can you imagine? Three million people, if they went on a narrow path, the line or the queue would be eight hundred miles long. Two weeks ago, we had a youth camp in Hebron, Hyderabad. Ten thousand young people came. They went on a procession on Saturday morning. Can you imagine ten thousand people? It was so difficult to control them. I saw some police also. I saw online. Now, can you imagine ten thousand people, how much difficulty they had? This is three million people. And they have worked out a statistics that if they go on a single line, it will be eight hundred miles. And it is written in the book of Exodus, when you have time, you must go home and read it. In the book of Exodus, chapter fourteen, the entire account is given. And verse twenty-one, Exodus fourteen, twenty-one, you will see that God pushed back the sea and caused the Red Sea dry. And can you imagine? Three million people crossed the Red Sea according to the statistics in twenty-two hours. What a miracle God did. Awesome God. Three million people in twenty-two hours, they crossed the Red Sea. May, my dear brothers, my dear sisters, many times we have experienced miracles in our family life, individual life, church life. Every one of us in our Christian life, we have experienced miracles. And now, after experiencing miracles in our life, many times in our life, we act as if he does not know my situation that I am going through. We say this, very often, we say these words. God does not know my situation that I am going through. And we say, God does not care for me. God does not love me anymore. God does not answer my prayer anymore. My dear brothers, my dear sisters, to you, I want to remind you that our God is a living and an awesome God. Don't doubt him. Whatever may be the situation that you are going through, I know that every one of you who's listening to me tonight, I know that every one of you, you are going through Red Sea experience. You may be in America, but I know that you are going through Red Sea experience. I know that you are going through deep waters experience. Some of you are going through furnace experience. And we all go through bitter experiences. God allows it. God allows in our life. And when we go through bitter experiences, many questions comes in our heart. Why God? Who God? What God? How long God? We keep on asking God so many questions. My dear friends, let me remind you, tonight, there are many preachers. They are known as prosperity gospel preachers. You know what they are preaching? It's very soothing to the ears. You know what they are preaching? If you come to the Lord Jesus Christ, you will be having big mansions. You will get lot of money. You will have the latest car. That is very soothing to hear. But I tell you, it is false gospel prosperity preaching. If you are a child of God, when you are born again, you go through these bitter experiences. It is perplexing when we go through these experience. And I want to tell you, don't forget tonight that bitter experiences to make us better spiritually. And do not forget what God has done in your life. I want to remind you that he's an awesome God. He's a miracle doing God, even today, he's in the business of doing miracles. And he will continue to help you. And he knows about you, he cares about you and he loves you in your every situation that you are going through tonight. Now, please tell me, I know you are in your home. Please tell me, do you know what is the most expensive liquid in the world today? Do you know what is the most expensive liquid in the world today? It is your tears. And I want to tell you, you know what it is? Do you know the composition of the tears? The composition of your tears, it is said like this. It is ninety-nine percent water, one percent emotion. But I'm not, I don't agree with that. I want to tell you that the composition of tears is the opposite. It is ninety-nine percent emotion, one percent water. When do we get tears? When we are really stressed, when we are really overwhelmed with our emotions. I was doing a little study about the tears. I want to tell you, there are three kinds of tears. One is called basal tears, B A S A L. Basal tears comes to our eyes. Basal tears comes to our eyes to lubricate our eye. That is called basal tears. Secondly, it is called reflex tears. Reflex tears comes, tears comes in our eyes because of smoke, because of onion. That is the second kind of tears. The third kind of tears is called the psychic tears. Or it is called the emotional tears. And I want to remind you that these tears are stirred up by strong emotion such as sadness, joy, and stress. Can I tell you something? Are you going through Red Sea experience? Are you going through water, bitter water experience? Are you going through bitter experiences and you are shedding tears tonight? I want to encourage you that according to Psalms fifty-six and verse eight, your tears are bottled. Have you gone through the place called Gilgal? I want to tell you, I want to remind you that God is in the business, the God who enabled the people of Israel to go through Red Sea. Three million people walking on dry land. God did it in twenty-two hours. The same God is with you and me tonight. And in whatever situation you are going through, Peter the Apostle is the only Apostle who feared about death among the twelve disciples. He had the fear of death. And he wrote these words to the Jewish Christians who went through a wave of suffering. And you know what Peter the Apostle said? Our trial, our suffering is only for a little while. One Peter, chapter one, verse six. He uses that word, "a little while." And then, when you read One Peter, chapter five and verse ten, it is repeated again, "The God of all grace." See how he begins, One Peter, five-ten. "The God of all grace." And what does he say after that? Who has called us, who has called us to his eternal glory by Christ Jesus? Don't forget, after you have suffered a while, now do you understand why God allows you to go through bitter experience? Do you know why? After a little while, what happens to you? You are, you are perfected, established, strengthened, settled in your faith life. And that is the reason that we must understand the meaning of Gilgal. And my dear friends, I want to encourage you that God, don't be discouraged. God does take care of you. God loves you. Through every situation that you go through, it's for a little while and he'll bring you out victoriously, triumphantly for the glory of his name. That is the first meaning of Gilgal. Now, we go to the second meaning of Gilgal. Again, we are going to do a small Bible reading. And you must follow it very carefully. The meaning of Gilgal, the second meaning of Gilgal. Now, turn with me to, please, to Joshua, chapter five. We are going to read verse two. Joshua, chapter five, verse two. Please look into your Bible. "At that time the Lord said unto Joshua, make these sharp knives, and circumcise again the children of Israel the second time." Now, now we are going to read from verse six to nine. I will read verse six. You read verse seven. "For the children of Israel walked forty years in the wilderness, till all the people that were men of war, which came out of Egypt, were consumed; because they obeyed not the voice of the Lord unto whom the Lord swear that he would show them the land, which the Lord swear unto their fathers, that he would give us a land that float with milk and honey." Verse seven, please. I'll read verse eight, "And it came to pass, when they had done circumcising all the people, that they abode in their places in the camp, till they were whole." Verse nine, please.
"And the Lord said unto Joshua, this day have I rolled away the reproach of Egypt from of you; therefore the name of the place is called Gilgal unto this day."
Yes, so now, please, from this Bible reading, we see that the Lord commanded Joshua that the people of Israel to be circumcised. Now circumcision, don't forget, speaks of separation. It was a sign that they had made a covenant with God. So Gilgal symbolically stands for separation. Now, what is this meaning of separation? Being separated from the past and being separated unto God. That is the meaning of separation. Now, if you read verses two to nine, it tells us, you know, I want to make it very simple for you. How many years the people of Israel were walking in the wilderness? Forty years. In that forty years, there were children born during that wilderness journey. So God commanded to Joshua that the second generation born in the wilderness were not circumcised. But before, before the second generation could enter canon and receive their inheritance, Joshua made sure they all circumcised according to God's commandment. After this was completed, according to Joshua, chapter five, verse nine, the Lord told Joshua these golden words. You know what God told? "This day have I rolled away the reproach of Egypt from of you." Now, the meaning of circumcision, please listen carefully, is to put off the body of the flesh. And Paul the Apostle, he explains this for us to understand. Now, I'll say, can I repeat this again? The meaning of circumcision is to put off the body of the flesh. Now you will understand this very nicely. Turn your Bibles with me to Colossians. And chapter two. The book of Colossians. And chapter two, verse eleven. Please follow your Bibles. Colossians, chapter two, verse eleven. Paul explains this so beautifully. "In whom also ye are circumcised, with the circumcision made without hands, in putting off the body of the sins of the flesh by the circumcision of Christ." Gilgal, those of you who are listening to this message, please write this not only on paper, but write this upon your heart tonight. Those of us who are involved in ministry, you know, we all love to serve the Lord. I have no doubt that every one of you listening tonight, you love the Lord. I have no doubt. And every one of you, in your capacity, you want to serve the Lord. I know that. And this is very important for you and for me. Those of us who are serving the Lord in the local assembly, in Betel, house of worship. Every one of you are involved in the work of the Lord. Gilgal is the place where the flesh is judged. God says, "The flesh must be put off." We must agree with God. And we must reject the flesh and put the flesh to death. Did you hear me? The flesh is everything we possess from our birth. Even though you are a believer, even though you are born again. And you know John, chapter three, verse six. Very, very important verse. John, chapter three and verse six. You know what we read? "That which is born of the flesh is flesh." Will you kindly give your ear to me tonight, please? Will you listen carefully to these words that I'm going to tell you? In the flesh, there is not only sin, uncleanness, and corruption, but also natural kindness. There is talent. There is zeal. There is wisdom. There is ability in the flesh. How do you use it? For God's work, how do you use it? You have to be very careful. And the most difficult lesson for a believer to learn in his life is recognizing his flesh. However you have grown in your spiritual life, however holy you are, I want to remind you tonight that in the flesh, there is sin. There is uncleanness and corruption. If you are doing God's work with sin, uncleanness, and corruption, you are wasting your time. Galatians, chapter six, verse eight. What a beautiful verse we need to learn. Galatians, chapter six, verse eight. Underline this verse in your Bible. Those of you who are serving the Lord. "For he that soweth to his flesh shall of the flesh reap corruption; but he that soweth to the spirit shall of the spirit reap life everlasting." How beautifully Paul puts this. Are you sowing into corruption? Or are you sowing into the spirit? Accordingly, you will receive. Now, don't forget that in the flesh, there is kindness. There is talent. There is zeal. There is ability. There is wisdom. How do you use it? Are you using it? Are you using your, all these things for competition in the house of God? And that is why Paul the Apostle said, in same Galatians, chapter two, verse twenty. We know this verse by heart. We only learned it by heart. But we are not allowed that to work in our life. Galatians two-twenty. We love to say this word. Oh, I know Galatians two-twenty by heart. But have you, but, but have you allowed it to work in your life? And see what Paul says in Galatians, chapter two, verse twenty. Shall we read it together slowly? Shall we read Galatians two-twenty altogether? "I am crucified with Christ; nevertheless I live, yet not I; but Christ liveth in me; and the life which now I live in the flesh, I live by the faith of the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself for me." My dear brothers, my dear sisters, the most difficult lesson for a believer to learn is to recognize his flesh that must be cut off by the cross. The cross will reduce the flesh. The cross will reduce the flesh. And every day, there is a constant struggle in the life of the believer. Every day, there is a constant struggle in the life of the believer between the old nature and the new nature. Now, can you give me a wild guess? Who wins? Every day, there is a war, there is a conflict between my old nature and new nature. Who wins? Every day, my old nature wins. How sad in the life of the believer. And that is why, again, Galatians, chapter five. We are going to read this verse. The book of Galatians, chapter five, verse seventeen. Please follow your Bible. Galatians, chapter five, verse seventeen. Please follow your Bible. "For the flesh lusteth against the spirit, and the spirit against the flesh; and these are contrary, the one to the other, so that he cannot do the things that he would do." Is this not true in our lives? Constant struggle. So what is the secret of victory? Verse sixteen. "This I say then, walk in the spirit, and he shall not fulfill the lust of the flesh." That is the secret, my dear brother, my dear sister. And tonight, I want to challenge your hearts. Those of you who are listening to this message. This is a very precious lesson we need to learn. And we learn this in Gilgal. I need to allow the cross. I need to allow the cross to work in my flesh. Can I close tonight's message with a beautiful example? Now, those of you who are talking, please put, put your, make it mute so that you will not disturb others. There are people. I want to give you a beautiful example, allowing the cross to work in the flesh every day. There was a bamboo tree in the forest. You know the bamboo tree? They grow very tall. So the master came to see the bamboo tree. Now, tonight, you just imagine for a little moment that the bamboo tree is speaking. So the master came to the bamboo tree and said, "Hi, bamboo tree, how are you?" And the bamboo tree said, "Master, I am well, but I am lonely in this forest. Can you please take me home? When will you come?" And the master said, "Bamboo tree, I will come after three months. And I will take you home." And they said, "Bye-bye." And the master went home. Exactly after three months, the master came back. And you know what the master said? "Bamboo tree, how are you?" Then the bamboo tree said, "Master, I am so happy that you have come, you have kept your word, you have come to take me home." And the master said, "Yes, I am going to take you home." And then the master took out And then the master took out a big knife. And the bamboo tree said, Master, why are you taking this big knife? Is that for me? And the master said, yes, bamboo tree, I brought this knife for you. Why? What are you going to do? And the master said, I'm going to cut you into pieces. And I'm going to take you home. And after I take you home, I'm going to make you a beautiful, out of you, I'm going to make you a beautiful furniture. My dear friends, tonight, God wants your ministry to be blessed. He wants to make your, your ministry beautiful. And the only secret is that I must allow the cross every day in my life to reduce it. Only the cross can reduce my flesh. And you know, Elijah and Elisha, together, they visited this place called Gilgal. And we saw tonight two precious meaning of this word Gilgal. And friends, tonight, I challenge your lives that you need to come to Gilgal. It is very important. Gilgal is the place we saw the rolling away. The people of Israel, after le- leaving Egypt and the wilderness, they came to Gilgal. And we saw the meaning of Gilgal to remind us that through whatever Red Sea experience or water, bitter water experience or Jordan experience or furnace experience you are going through tonight, don't forget that God cares for you. God loves you. And every trial you are going through tonight is for a little while. And secondly, we saw the meaning of Gilgal is circumcising reminds us of separation. And we saw the meaning of separation, being separated from the past and being separated unto God. And we saw tonight, Gilgal is the place where the flesh is judged. And God says the flesh must be put off. So we must agree with God, and we must reject the flesh, put to death. The flesh is everything we possess from our birth. That which is born of the flesh is flesh. And when we learn to put off the flesh, God will bless your ministry and make your ministry a blessing unto many. What you have heard tonight, may the loving Lord make it a living reality, a living experience in your life and in my life. Shall we pray? Even in your home, if possible, kneel down and be on your knees. God's word has come to us tonight. It has come to us in all simplicity and clarity in a way that we can understand. God has spoken to us. Have you come to Gilgal? You are a believer. Have you come to this place called Gilgal? And God wants you, is challenging you tonight to come to Gilgal. And that is the place where you need to come and understand the ways of God in your life. It's very important that every believer must come to Gilgal. And tonight, God has spoken to you. Don't forget the wonderful things that God has done in your life. God will continue to bless you in your sorrow, in your tears, in your difficulties, in your trials. God is testing your faith. You need patience. The testing of your faith, the trial of your faith produces patience. James, chapter one, verse three. When we go through difficult experiences, we need patience. That is what you and I need. And you need patience when you come to Gilgal. And secondly, we need to put off the flesh. If you want to serve the Lord, you must learn that secret. Lord, I don't want to do your work out of my flesh. I don't want to sow to corruption. I want to sow to spirit. Is this your desire? And tonight, in the light of the Word, search your own life. Where you have failed the Lord, ask God his forgiveness. Claim his blood to wash you. And come to him tonight with a deep surrender. And tell the Lord, Lord, from tonight, I surrender my life to you afresh. Have mercy on me. I want to love you and serve you. I make a new surrender tonight. Have mercy on me. Bring me to the place of blessing and fruitfulness. I'll give you two or three minutes. Come to the Lord tonight with your desires and tell him, tell him, Lord, I'm weak. Please help me. And the Lord will surely help you tonight. Two, three minutes, please take this two, three minutes and say a small prayer in your heart. I will continue this message, God willing, tomorrow evening. I'm going to request Brother Linus to close in prayer and give the benediction.
Gracious Lord, loving and living heavenly Father, great and mighty and a wonderful King God, our hearts are full of praise, worship and thanks even. Once again, Lord, this Tuesday evening, you have truly, Father Lord, blessed us in found in brother Samuel's place. And also, Father Lord, hearing thy gracious word from Second Kings, chapter two, the life of Elijah, Elijah and Elisha, Father Lord, where their journey, Father Lord, when you were about to take Elijah, Father Lord, into the world with, the journey started from, from Gilgal. And then they were going to go on further down to different places, Father Lord. Thank you, Lord Father, for speaking to us, reminding us the meaning of Gilgal, Father Lord, where the reproach of Egypt was rolled away. And also, Father Lord, the separation aspect, the circumcision, where the newborn, the, the new generation, that came up in a, in a forty years of people of Israel's journey, the new, the, those, those generations, the new generation that came, they were not circumcised. That covenant, that was, Father Lord, between, was made covenant of circumcision made with Abraham. Lord, they were, they did not follow that. And now, Lord Father, they are, are through Joshua, Lord, they are performing the, Father Lord, the, the ritual or the circumcision aspect. But Lord, yeah, yeah, there is a much greater meaning that you have for us now, the spiritual circumcision of our heart to, to separate us, to separate ourselves from the world and to separate ourselves to God. So thank you, Lord Father, for reminding us, Father Lord, this, this precious truth this evening. How, Father Lord, flesh is so strong, working in our life. But Lord, as we, as, as being born again, with the Holy, with the Holy Spirit and coming of the Holy Spirit now. Lord, Paul is reminding us in Galatians, many places, Father Lord, as we yield our life, when we go, yield our life to the Spirit, then we can walk in the Spirit, pleasing to the Lord. And we will, we will, we will have a victory over the flesh. So Lord, help us, Father Lord, to, the flesh must die, the cross must work in our life. Help us, Lord, that every moment when the flesh is, Father Lord, getting strong, that we may, Father Lord, yield, let the cross work in our life. And as, Father Lord, you died on the cross to set us free, Father Lord. So Lord Father, we thank you, praise you, worship you for reminding us once again, that Gilgal experience. And Father Lord, though, Father Lord, we, suffering comes in our life. And we know, Father Lord, that many ways, Father Lord, suffering comes through unemployment, through need for the financial need or the sickness or health issues or many things, Father Lord, issues with the children, so much, Father Lord, things that comes in our life. Yet Peter reminds us, and Paul also reminds us, Father Lord, that this, this, these are transient. These difficulties are for a moment only. Though, Father Lord, many times we feel they are long. But Lord, we know that you allow only, Father Lord, for the time that you think it is right for us. And your desire is, Father Lord, that we may endure through the difficult situation. And ultimately, Father Lord, going through this difficult situation builds up the patience, as you reminded in James, chapter one. And so, Father, we thank you for the experience of Gilgal, of removing the reproach, Father Lord, and also rolling away of the reproach, and also, Father Lord, as life of separation. Continue, Father Lord. Thank you, Father, for dear brother Ken and sister Anne, to brought them to us, Father Lord, according to the things that we prayed for. And now, Father Lord, we pray that these days, this is only starting, Father Lord, and we have been enriched, Father Lord, through this Gilgal experience. As the servant, Father Lord, speaks of more, they turn about the battle and the, battle and Jericho and Jordan. We pray, Father Lord, that will help their servant and help us also to receive, Father Lord, that this, for the, Father Lord, not be just here and forgetful. But Lord, there may be imprint on our heart. So help us, Lord. Thank you, Father, for each and everyone who has joined us, Father Lord. Anyone, Father Lord, who has made a decision, oh Lord, that will help them, Father Lord, to put their faith and trust in you. So Lord, be with us, Father Lord, for the rest of the evening, fellowship, as you continue in the fellowship. And Lord, we pray for each and everyone who has joined, Lord, that will be with them, meet all the needs, Father Lord, spoken and spoken need. You bring that all before you, Father Lord. Be with us. Thank you once again for the precious words, Father Lord, from the life of Elijah and Elisha and forty years of the experience, Father Lord, which is, Father Lord, very sad to say that, Father Lord, the Bible records that, that, that you were grieved with the generation. But it is, Father Lord, our self-examination. How much, Father Lord, we have grieved you throughout the day. I know, Father Lord, I know myself, grieved thee, Father Lord, with many, many ways. Talking about other people and so many things, Father Lord. Oh Lord, that will forgive me, forgive us, Father Lord. And help us, Father Lord, that we may not be the generation, those who would grieve thee. But Lord, we may be the generation of those who would, Father, live a separated life and pleasing unto thee. Help us, Lord. Thank you once again, Father Lord, for that precious word brought to us in Jesus' precious nitty prayer.
Amen.
Now, the grace of our loving Savior, Lord Jesus Christ, and the love of God, the Father, eternal love, sacrificial love, agape love, which, which Father has loved us, and the sweet fellowship and communion that the Holy Spirit may abide with each and every one of us, especially the household of faith, from now and forever.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen.